We've got eerily quiet.
We follow the atomic clock up here for official time. Here it is, 5:30, I'll call our city council meeting to order. I'll tell you we have one item that we're going to move around, so, but it'll be after we do some of the things which most of y'all are here for, or many of y'all are here for. We're gonna move the executive session up under citizens' general discussion, so for those who are here for events after that, I apologize, but there's a reason why, it's meant that it's not my decision. But first of all, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Nix, will you lead us in that?
Mayor, you know it's dangerous when you give me the floor.
Don't fall.
I want to, I want to make a comment, if I may, about how fortunate we are to live in a country where we do, where we have the freedom to gather like this, and where we have the freedom to pledge our allegiance to something other than someone or a party. It is a rare privilege in this world today. I hope y'all will join me as we recite the pledge to our flag, which means so much to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. Tonight our invocation will be led by Jared Brown of the Grace Family Bible Church, or, excuse me, Grace Fellowship Church. I'll get that straight, your man, Jared.
Could you bow with me, please? Father, we love you, and we thank you so much for a place that we can call home, a place of wonderful believers, a place of wonderful citizens, where we are led by a wonderful city council. Father, I ask you tonight for unity. Lord, I ask you tonight for wisdom. I ask that you would just rest heavily, Holy Spirit, upon our city council members, and that each one would feel the weight of your presence, and that, Lord, in all of the challenging issues that come up in our city as we grow, because obviously you have plans for us to grow and to prosper and to be blessed. Lord, would you help us devote our attention towards the challenges and tackling those together as one, as one city, united under your plan? So we pray your blessing over the city council and over this time, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
In addition to the honor we get to say the pledge, we're also honored that we have y'all come next week, age council meeting, and lead us in invocation. One of the cool parts about being the mayor, the proclamations, and so we have a special event tonight, and I'm gonna read it up here so it's on recording, and then we're gonna get up here and make a presentation. So I want to read something, it's a proclamation recognizing Dr. O.H. Bud Frazier. Gentlemen up here, I got to meet this a few minutes ago for the first time. We read that, on, so we put it on tape. Whereas Dr. O.H. Bud Frazier was born in Stevieville, Texas, and attended Tarleton State University before earning his bachelor's degree from the University of Texas and medical degree from Baylor College of Medicine. And his surgical training was interrupted by the Vietnam War, where he served as a U.S. Army Flight Surgeon from 1968 to 1970, treading the halls of Baylor for an assault helicopter company. For his bravery and exceptional service, he received the Combat Flight Medal, the Vietnamese Navy Medal, and the Vietnamese Distinguished Service Medal. And for five decades, Dr. Frazier has been dedicated to improving the treatment of severe heart failure and advancing heart transplantation and artificial devices that substitute or assist with the pumping action of the human heart. And through, throughout 1970s and 80s, Dr. Frazier conducted experimental work toward developing an implant, LVAD. In 19, or 2011, he implanted the first successful continuous-flow artificial heart by using two second-generation HeartMate II LVADs to replace a patient's failing heart. And Dr. Frazier has performed over 1,200 heart transplants and implanted more than 900 left ventricular assist devices, more than any other surgeon in the world. As a result of his work, Dr. Frazier is one of the world's top transplantation and mechanical circulatory support surgeons. And Dr. Frazier served as the NIH National Heart and Lung and Blood Institute Advisory Committee, and chaired the original committee that initiated the first federal allocation system to distribute hearts for transplantation. And Dr. Frazier is a true living legend, and is celebrated for his contributions to the field of mechanical circulatory support and pioneering treatments for patients suffering from heart failure. And Dr. Frazier's impact on patients, and especially is immeasurable, and his dedication to improving patient outcomes and advancing medical technology exemplifies the spirit of American Society for Artificial Internal Organs, ASAIO. And the city of Stevieville congratulates Dr. Frazier on receiving the inaugural, I'm gonna try to say this correctly, Pushpa and Kiwa Krishan Gupta Lifetime Achievement Award in the Development of Therapies for Cardiovascular and Pulmonary Diseases from the ASAIO. Therefore, I deduce the name of Mayor of Stevieville, Texas, to hereby issue this proclamation recognizing the work and lifetime achievements of Dr. O.H. Bud Frazier. I want to get some pictures.
How can we beat that?
We're a standing much legendary out here. Why don't you get some of your family up here with you? Let's get some family pictures.
Well, my team. All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Wonderful. Thank you. Why don't you get a photo here, and we'll give you off to say something. Everybody have a microphone here. We need to find a microphone.
Well, it's a great pleasure to, to receive this award. I've had awards from the Russians and Chinese, and five awards in America, but in the sense, growing up in Stevieville, this means a lot more to me. I think it gave me a lot of advantages in life. It was advantage and disadvantage to have everybody knew you, because Stevieville was about 6,000 when I grew up here. So you couldn't get away with anything. And, so, but I, I think it held you to a discipline to do the right thing, and I think that's always been a value to me. And it's also good, and that, in Stevieville, you grew, you grew up with everybody. You grew up with a carpenter's son, the doctor's son, the lawyer's son, the field worker's son, and, and I think that was a tremendous advantage to me in life, particularly as a physician, because you have to deal with people at all levels, and so many of our students today are, they just go to school with people that are more or less like they are, which is, I think, is a great disadvantage, I'd say. But there was a great advantage in growing up in a wonderful city like Stevieville, will have things like this. You don't have people turn out like this in Houston, the meeting, you know, and, and it is a great honor to me to, to ruin the speaker. It is, it is a great honor to me, and it means a lot to me as I continue to go down the road. I started working on these pumps when I was a medical student, and I was there to kill a couple times in Vietnam, so I decided when I came back I would continue to work on these pumps. I worked with Dr. DeBakey, and we wanted to make an artificial heart plus what we call a left ventricular assist device, that's what an LVAD is, but it takes over the work of the heart. And there's been over 100,000 of those implanted in the world, and I said I was in China in 2019, I saw 10 patients that had been more or less saved by this pump, because you just put them in patients that are dying. And this is a pump that we developed in our lab in, in Houston, and it, it is rewarding, and it's most rewarding to be recognized to the wonderful city that I grew up in. Thank you.
It's an honor that you're from here, sir. It's special for us, and so, well, thank you very much. Another the proclamation, Dana, where are you? Get up there with a microphone. I want to read a proclamation. I'm gonna read this up here on microphone again. Don't, come on, Darrell. We'll get you the picture. You're slow, you're slow-moving. Okay, I'm gonna read it on microphone. Well, let's, let the folks leave her a minute. I talked about you today. Hey, this is a proclamation regarding Men's Health Awareness Month. Good health is one of life's greatest blessings. Unfortunately, many men take their health for granted. I can tell you, I did. We want to encourage men to maintain and improve their health by taking simple, manageable steps, such as getting regular checks up, checkups, being active, eating a healthy diet, and refraining from smoking. And legislation creating June as National Men's Health Month was signed into law in 1994, and this annual observance provides us with the opportunity to renew our efforts toward addressing this issue. Among the significant risks men face are high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes, stress, and several types of cancer, including prostate, lung, and colon cancer. And as we prepare for Father's Day, I encourage all Texas men to recognize the importance of seeking preventative, timely, and appropriate medical care. All of us, both men and women, remain mindful of the important role preventative medicine and medical health, mental health care have, can have in our lives and the lives of our loved ones. Together, we can make a difference. Therefore, I deduce the name of Mayor of Stevieville, Texas, to hereby proclaim Men's Health Awareness Month throughout the city of Stevieville, and encourage all of our citizens to support the cause, raising awareness of this month. We're gonna let you give a little speech, too.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, men that are in our lives are important to us, and it is important that you go in for those preventive checkups. In conjunction, and I'll have Darrell here beside me, in conjunction with it being National Men's Health Awareness Month, the city of Stevieville, Texas Health, Harris Methodist Hospital, and our AgriLife of Erazo County are all working together to sponsor a Man Up for Men's Health event. It's gonna be at the Stevieville Senior Center on June 22nd. We are gonna have speakers who are gonna provide some testimonials, and we also are going to have some speakers who are gonna talk about men's health and the importance of going in for those checkups. And I want to say a special shout-out to Jason King, who is gonna be one of our speakers at that event. I want to encourage all of you to come, even if you just stop in for a few minutes, please come in, because it is important, so.
You did great. Thank you.
And there are flyers over here for people that may be exiting, I'm not for sure what ways, but if you pick up a flyer for the event, and please share that and pass it on.
And all of you male employees, your bosses are talking. What day is it?
Okay, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
The next item we have is the oath of office for a new Stevieville police officer. I'm gonna turn that over to Chief Dan Harris. This is a good event. It's pretty cool.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, it's my honor and privilege to introduce the newest member of the Stevieville Police Department, Officer Natasha Smith. So just to tell you a little about her. She's sitting there with the mayor. She jo, she comes to us from the Riverside, California Sheriff's Department, where one of the, the key things we really like about her is she was one of the first mounted deputy sheriffs for the Riverside, California Sheriff's, County Sheriff's Departments, and so fitting for.
Are you gonna put on a motorcycle?
Yes. But she also specialized in traffic and DUI enforcement, which is a, a big priority for us there, but we are honored and excited to have her here, and, and believe that her expertise will be a huge asset for the visitors and those who live and reside here in Stevieville, who were, she will protect and serve them. And so, her different, Mr. Val Temme will pin her badge, and then she will be sworn As they're doing that, I ask that you please pray for her safety.
We have had people get pinned, I mean, stuck with those pins before.
You're getting pictures. Make sure the mayor's in it, too. Come on, sir. Right here.
Here we go. Here we go.
Of course, this is where my husband and his ex would call, but I'm sorry. Sorry, guys.
Raise your right hand, let me peek up there.
I, Natasha Smith.
I, Natasha Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office.
Police Officer of the City of Stevieville.
Police Officer of the City of Stevieville.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
She's not legal till she signs the papers. Did you bring your horse with you?
I did, sir.
All right.
You'll fit right in in the cowboy capital, then.
As I mentioned earlier, we're gonna move the executive session up at this point, and so in compliance with the provision of the Texas Open Meetings Laws, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes, annotated in accordance with Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property Delivered at the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property to, with real property located at S260 City Edition, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney to console or opinion or contemplate a litigation. It shouldn't say, Westgate should say, that was an error.
Mayor, you had to say that you wanted to do the general discussion before we went back.
There you go, we'll let the general, we'll come back and do that.
Okay, well, that, that's a good point.
Let's go ahead. Did we have general, nobody signed up? There we go. All right, we're, we'll stay in recess until we get back. There we go. All right, we'll stand recess until we get back.
Okay, it is six fourteen. I'll call us back in a regular session. First item on the agenda is consider approval appointments to city council committees. I think everybody received their list last week. I took y'all's list of requests. I sat down with Sarah and Jason and we finalized this group. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, make the motion to approve the list as presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. Consider appointment of voting member for text twenty-one. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason.
Mr. Mayor, council. As you know, the city is a member of the text twenty-one transportation coalition. We joined, I guess, almost two years ago. And that helps try to advance our transportation needs at the state level. And so we're a member of several other cities across the state and counties. As part of that, the council designates a voting member. Our previous voting member was Mr. McClinton and he's now left councils. So I'm asking for the council to designate a new voting member for that. And I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Jason. As an example, one of the things we did last week, few weeks ago in Corpus. We got to meet the, I think she called it vice, uh, vice director, I don't remember. Maybe assistant president or something for SpaceX. And I don't know many, how many of y'all know this, but in a city about sixty miles from here, SpaceX actually has a huge operation there and has several hundred employees. And one of the things we talked about, she and I talked about was methane gas. They don't use jet fuel. They use methane gas. When I asked her why, she said because when we go to Mars, we want to make sure we get back. And so it's potential we could have some relationship with her. So I've been asked, can I be willing to serve on that unless there's somebody else who wants to serve on the committee? You want to serve?
No. I was saying, that sounds good to me.
You gonna make that into a motion?
I'll make the motion that we appoint Mayor Doc Sabine as the voting member of text twenty-one.
Second that.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is approved budget amendments for fiscal year ending September thirtieth. Do we have Monica?
She's here.
She disappeared?
Mayor, we never turned down a volunteer.
There you go. The gentleman who's the director, the director or president of that organization is retiring. He was a commissioner from Tarrant County and been on that board since its inception. It's a pretty good organization. She just thought we were going to be executive session a lot longer than we were.
I didn't hear y'all come out of executive.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So normally we would take these to our committees. But since we just barely appointed them, we're gonna go ahead and bring them straight to council this time. So the amendments are gonna total five hundred and fifty thousand. And what they're for is the fire department is reallocating funds to cover the additional expenses anticipated for their bunker gear and uniforms. And that had to do with, we've had a really high employee turnover. Be great if we could hire people that fit into the uniforms and bunker gear that we have, but it doesn't actually work that way. I tried to talk them into it and they just told me it didn't work.
Robert's kind of stubborn like that.
Yeah. And then we're reallocating funds to cover anticipated vehicle maintenance costs because they're becoming in higher than what we had budgeted. And we're reallocating funds to purchase four Panasonic tough books. And that's because we have some aging batteries that can no longer be replaced. We have looked at suitable alternatives, but the tough books are really the ones that stand up. They really need six, but they're going for four right now. And we'll probably replace the other ones in the next budget year. So all of that is a zero. We're just moving money from one line item to another line item just to cover where they need the expenditures. In the general fund, we're transferring five hundred thousand for the airport expansion project. And that's budgeted because of the purchase of the final property that we need for that expansion project. That was not really gonna impact our final fund balances in the general fund because we had that earmarked as a commitment. So it was already taken out. We're just moving it from the commitment to the budget in the general fund. And then it'll go over into the airport fund. It'll increase their cash balances and fund balances in their fund. We have unspent budgeted funds for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three of five hundred and fifty thousand that are being carried over for the purchase of a vacuum truck in the water and wastewater fund. When I did the mid-year budget adjustments, I missed this one. And so we're adding it now, but we're still, you know, we didn't spend it last year. So it ended up in reserves. So we're just taking it out of the reserves and budgeting again, so.
Questions for Monica.
Monica, what's the fund balance of the airport fund? Before the transfer?
So what we had originally adopted for the fund balance was going to be nine point two million. Of course, not all of that's spendable. If we want to talk about like our estimated unrestricted cash balance, that would have been about five hundred and thirty-two. And so now it's changing to a little over a million.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Will that be adequate for the property acquisition that we're working on?
Yes. Now, when we actually get to the construction piece of that project, there will be more additional transfers needed from the general fund.
Okay. We did, by the way, for the new council members, we have purchased the property.
Yes.
Okay.
We just don't know exactly how much that Tech dot aviation is going to reimburse us for that. We're still waiting on that information.
We have a meeting Friday with our consultant. And then hopefully in the next three or four weeks, we'll have another with FAA and Tech dot aviation.
So whatever we don't actually have to use as part of our cost of purchasing it, we'll just stay in the fund and apply towards our percentage share of the construction when we get those grants and everything in place.
Other questions? So the first item is the consider approval budget amendments. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Street annual budget maintenance project.
Sir, is part of that, you actually have to, you've got to adopt an ordinance. It's listed in there.
I'll see the ordinance.
What's the number?
Oh, what?
We have to have an ordinance.
Twenty twenty-four dash O dash thirteen.
Twenty twenty-four dash?
O dash thirteen.
Okay, David made the motion. Will you?
I will amend my motion.
Can you do it that way?
Yes.
Okay.
To adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash O dash thirteen.
Yeah, second it. Do we have to take the, Randy?
Randy.
Randy, do we have to vote on the amendment first?
You've already voted on the amendment, I think.
The amendment is?
I already have to vote on the ordinance.
Okay. We're voting on the ordinance at this point, twenty twenty-four dash O dash thirteen. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. Every time we're up here, Nick asks for more money.
Hard to follow that.
But he is saving his fifteen million bucks on this.
At least.
At least fifteen million.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor, council. On May twenty-first, the city received an open bid for the annual street maintenance project. This year's project focuses on Frye Street from Ollie all the way down past Dale to the west to Roland Street. And it's an application of what we call a double chip seal and a cape seal, which most of you are familiar with our chip seal project. This cape seal, what happens is we add a layer of micro surface over the top of that, fills in the gaps, makes it for a nice, smooth, clean, black application. Very nice, smooth ride. And we should expect no less than five to seven years of good wear and tear off of this surface. There were two bids that were received. The first bid came from Intermountain Slurry Seal of Lewisville. And the second bid came from J Mills Contracting here in Stevensville. The Intermountain Slurry bid was three ninety-one, two forty-five. J Mills bid was three ninety-nine, three seventy-six. That's a difference of just over eighty-one hundred dollars or just over two percent. Now, there is a local provision that allows this project to be awarded to the local vendor, and that is the recommendation of staff.
Questions for Nick.
Have we used this process before, Mr. Williams, to preserve our streets?
You know, I know we've used this process before, but I would not know which projects we've used it on, if it was a street project or not. But I do recall this being used in the past. Yes, sir.
Any idea of a start date and completion date?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. This particular application of cape seal is something that can be done in a matter of weeks. And I did visit with J Mills today, saying that if they were awarded the project, they would have it completed prior to school opening up again.
All the way from Ollie to Roland?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And what about the other company? How soon could they get it done?
Well, I didn't visit with them on the timeline, but there is a sixty-day timeline to have that done. So there's a possibility that it could overlap the starting of school, which is the middle of August.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I would move approval of the contract for the street maintenance project with J Mills Contracting in the amount of three ninety-nine, three seventy-six for the mentioned right-of-way reconditioning.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. I guess it's yours, too.
Yes, sir. This item is with, well, it is a request for authorization to purchase a budgeted utility vacuum truck. In twenty twenty-two, funds were allocated for the utility vacuum truck that Ms. Harris mentioned in the budget amendments. In October of twenty twenty-two, we ordered said truck and that truck has still not been delivered. We have had those delivery dates pushed back time and time again. As such, we have located a different truck. We've demoed that truck and the utility department has requested to purchase this truck. Now, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was not spent is still available because it was just approved in the budget again. And this particular truck is five forty-nine, nine eighty-eight, savings of twelve dollars. And...
Sharpe that up on the savings.
So, you know, normally we like to go and point that out. But the issue with this other truck not being delivered, so I've been in touch with IDS, which is the newer truck manufacturer, and actually, let me start over. They're both Freightliner trucks. The difference is the vacuum system that's on these trucks. The vacuum system on this truck is scheduled to be delivered on August twelfth. And I did get a guarantee from them that said they would pay the city of Stevensville one hundred dollars per day if it was delivered after August twelfth. So we do have a safety.
Is that going to your savings if we get it back?
I'd love to, we've got places to use it, yes, sir. But we would, we'd love to have that truck. We use it every day backing down around other lines, especially gas lines or fiber optic. It's become indispensable to us, not just running sewer lines.
Questions?
Will we have the truck that we are currently using still in use? Or will we phase it out with the replacement of this one?
We will eventually phase it out, but because it's been not quite two years, we've put a lot of money back into that other truck to keep it running. And so we're gonna continue to use it until it gets to a point where it's not worth putting money back into.
So we'll actually have two functional, at least for a while?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve the purchase of the utility vacuum truck from Houston Freightliner.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Yes, sir.
Make a presentation.
So we just went through the review process for our request for proposal for the construction of the senior center. And so what we're asking for tonight is the approval of the contract with Boski Construction, so.
Do we have a picture or anything we show the folks?
Not on this agenda.
Let's put a website.
We can get it on the website as soon, yeah.
That's what we're planning.
So the process that we asked staff to go through was specifically construction manager risk, allowance under state law. So the proposals they received were a combination of a request for qualification and a money proposal, cost proposal in the same process. So it could be evaluated in a one-step process. And so Mr. Trussell, Mr. Williams, Coach, you reported that evaluation as well?
Yes.
And Mr. McClinton evaluated the two proposals that were received.
Yes.
And they all came to the conclusion that the proposal from Boski Construction would be their recommendation to the council on how to proceed.
Okay. More information?
So if you've noticed on that proposal, I believe it, one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand.
One million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And so currently set aside in the budget, the city of Stevensville had a million dollars. And if you recall, the E. Rath County Commissioners Court and Judge Huckabee put five hundred thousand dollars towards this project with us. So that does create a deficit. I've worked with the finance director. We can ask the council to basically sideline some of our fund balance to cover that additional cost. We don't need a budget amendment or anything at this time. It'll be some period of time before we would need to do that, this process. I would anticipate it'll take about a year or so to go through that.
Slated for right in that area, about ten months.
During that time, I anticipate working with council on what to do with the current facility for when we're, once we vacate it and perhaps entertain proposals for selling that property. The buildings, not the parking and all those things. And so then we would ask perhaps to dedicate the proceeds from that to replenish possibly, if needed, at that time, this cost differential.
Okay. I just want to make a comment there that Joe Brown's the one who dedicated that five hundred, you know, it's out of his budget, the five hundred thousand dollars. And he called me, I was sitting in front of the post office, he called and said, you know, I have constituents living inside the city of Stevensville that want that new senior system, and I'll dedicate five hundred grand to it. So thank you to Joe for doing that. It was a great act. I appreciate that very much. Do I hear any questions?
Mr. King, the money that exceeds the one point five that we have budgeted, it just comes out of fund reserve. Is that correct, unrestricted reserve?
Yes, sir. If you approve this tonight, we'll go ahead and kind of put some parentheses around that amount of number, or that number if you will. And then as we got closer to needing it as part of the budget, probably what we would do is go ahead in this next fiscal year, just go ahead and include it.
Probably do it sooner.
Sooner, okay.
Since we'll want to issue the PO as soon as possible, so probably the next.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm gonna ask you the same thing I asked Nick. If we approve this, when's our start date and when's our expected completion date?
Soon as we can get a contract approved, I would assume we'd be ready to turn dirt pretty quick.
How many days of construction? Ten months?
The contract is, the current estimated time is ten months from the time we turn it up.
It's ten months, but I'll bet you it's soon.
Okay.
Is the work that's proceeding in the park now going to delay that start date?
I don't, I don't anticipate it.
I don't think so. They're out of our way currently. Shouldn't affect us.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, mayor, that we award Boski Construction for the senior services and center instruction.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Get that thing done. I'll start getting some phone numbers. I'll get started getting some phone calls from ladies before too long. You know, you do have to give them some hard hats so they can keep watching.
Hello, mayor, council. Just three tonight.
Thank you.
First one is RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five. Applicant is Brett Florrie. He's representing Caliber Collision, MPH Ventures LLC. And he's requesting a rezone at nine oh two Wolf Nursery Road. This is block one, lot three of the DOS Edition Phase Three of the city of Stevensville. This is currently zoned B two. And they're asking for the rezone to industrial because the intended project is a Caliber Collision. B two does not allow a paint and body shop. The only zoning district that we have that has that as permitted use is the industrial zoning district. Therefore, they're requesting the rezone. Been working with Caliber for about three months now on this project. And tonight we have Mr. Mike Lissy with Caliber Collision. If you have any specific comments or questions relating to the project. Again, this will be at nine oh two Wolf Nursery, right next to Discount Tire and across from the stadium. right next to Discount Tire and across from the stadium site. So, with that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer. Any questions?
I have a couple. Um, once it's rezoned, what are some of the uses that could be there other than a collision? Because once it's zoned, there's the ability to put whatever's in the, in the zone.
Yes, sir. Actually, ninety-seven, ninety-seven different permitted uses in industrial.
Well, get, get some, uh, ballpark. Give me some ideas of what they'd be.
So...
Because that's what I've had calls about.
Anything from a, a wrecking yard to tobacco shop to paint and body shop, uh, recreational vehicle cells, propane cells. So, why, it's the biggest use that we have. Now, I believe Caliber's already acquired the property and, uh, have that in their inventory, and so I don't, don't think the project's going to change from what they've presented.
But he could sell it, and the buyer could have that freedom to use what they wanted within that zone.
B two also has some pretty, I guess, heavy uses, not as extreme as, uh, industrial. So, that's a fair question. Uh, building's been sitting there empty for quite some time.
Now, we wouldn't use that.
And, uh, they have some renderings. I don't know if those made it into your packet. I think they're in the PowerPoint. Um, and so, it's a, it's a nice rendering and a nationwide company that's expressing interest in being here. So, again, Mike, Mr. Mike Lissy is here if you want to ask any more specific questions.
So, where's that located again? So, I know where Discount Tire is. Where, is it on?
It's going to be directly west of the stadium site. Yes, sir.
So, if we, it's a collision, or you repair and do all that. So, when there's car, we got a brand-new stadium going across the street, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I mean, is it going to be where, there's going to be cars all over, over there that are being repaired? What is the aesthetic look of that when we're building in that area?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, let me speak to one of the oddities in our land use code.
Okay.
Because it is a paint and body shop and a collision center, on our definitions, it is requiring the rezone from B two to industrial. However, an acceptable land use under B two is a mechanical repair automotive dealership, or automotive repair center.
Like a tire center next door.
Correct. But, so, I guess what I'm getting at, if you wanted to take, uh, a Parons Garage, for instance, and put right there, we wouldn't be having this conversation. They wouldn't ask us for anything but a building permit. Uh, what, the only thing that's requiring this is that in B two, we did not include paint, auto paint in repair. It's specifically an industrial only. But again, I just wanted to point out that if they wanted to open a mechanic shop, it wouldn't go to P and Z or council. It would be an acceptable land use, and they would just compile plans and get a building permit. So...
What could, what about parking? Explain.
Have more than adequate parking. Uh, Caliber Collision is also, uh, they have committed to doing exterior fencing all the way around the property so that there won't be any vehicles on the front of the property along Wolf Nursery.
Is there limitations on how long they keep, we have to prepare, but remember?
Believe that's right. Uh, about thirty days for the repair of these vehicles, and Caliber Collision, I think, has, with their business model, I don't, don't know that they have any stay longer than that very regularly. Uh, but again, I'm, I can't speak to, uh, their business practices all that well. Mr. King, thank you for the, those comments. Um, as far as the, the appearance and the, the invasionness to the neighborhood, I guess, uh, this use for Caliber Collision could actually be, um, maybe a lesser impact on the area than what it could be under B two with wrecking, or a auto repair shop. So, it's a great point.
Well, those are two questions that I had citizens call and ask about. So, anybody else have any questions? Questions? You want to get up and make a presentation?
I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Thomas. P and Z met on the fifteenth, May fifteenth, and made a unanimous decision to, uh, recommend the council approve the project. Thank you, sir.
Do I get up and make a comment? We'll have a public hearing in a second. So, I could get up and present a little bit? Just tell us about your project. Give us your name and address, if you would?
Yes, sir. Mike Lissy. Address is twelve fifty-five, Suite one twenty-five. That's West Fifteenth Street in Plainout, Texas. Uh, so, as you can see on the screen, uh, this is a modification of the existing building that's currently, or was previously, a fitness center. The only changes that are occurring on that front elevation, which is what you see at the top with the purple Caliber Collision sign, are basically just a paint and finish change. So, the building itself was in good condition. We liked the use of it. It was very conducive to what we were aiming to do. Uh, then the backsides, again, mainly it's just repair, refinishing of all of the existing building, and then the addition of things like the overhead doors and so forth that allow for vehicle access. The vast majority of any sort of work and noise is obviously going to be inside of the building. The only time you're going to have noise outside of the building is if a vehicle is being moved from one point to the other. Uh, as Steve was kind enough to mention, the building is screened all the way around. Any sort of vehicles that are in for repair are stored within that screened area. Those with the most, uh, uh, need for repair are typically stored inside of the building. So, most of the time, what you'll see is either vehicles that have minor damage or have already been repaired that are going to be on that lot. And that's assuming you were to go climb the fence to go take a peek. Uh, the only other parking on the site is going to be reserved strictly for visitors, uh, of which there is more than enough parking for that purpose. Uh, due to the type of operation that this runs, very rarely do you have very many visitors on the site. Uh, most of the time, those lots stay, or the, excuse me, those parking spaces at the visitor portion stay vacant during the day. Uh, for those that may be curious, operating hours are the typical plan of eight to five. Uh, noise levels are nowhere near what you would get for an automotive repair shop. You're not going to see anybody souping up hot rods or anything like that. Uh, and then, again, you know, in comparison to things like the fitness center that was there beforehand, you know, this is an eight-to-five business entity. Uh, we're not going to have any sort of after-hours uses or anything like that. I believe there was a rendering of the building that shows it a little bit more clearly on one of the other slides. If, if you could get to that one. There we go. So, uh, one of the key things to point out there is, you know, we have made it a point to go through, uh, make sure that we're current with anything in terms of landscape ordinances, uh, screening requirements, making sure that we, uh, updated things to account for Charlton State Purple. I could not find a purple shirt, but I tried. Uh, my friends here in Stevieville are going to give me grief about that later, I'm sure. But, uh, uh, in short, that's kind of what we're looking to do. Uh, at the end of the day, Caliber prides itself on being a good neighbor to the surrounding businesses as well as to the community. So, this is not something that's going to be looking to cause disruption. Uh, as was mentioned earlier by, uh, Mr. Thomas, the attorney, uh, thirty days is typically the turnaround time for a vehicle. At most, the goal is obviously much less than that, uh, since we are talking about a business entity here. Uh, with that, I will be happy to turn it over to any other questions, and I'll be here to the side to answer anything.
Questions? Appreciate yous, very much so.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're going to enter into a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to kind of speak in opposition or in favor of the project? No, this doesn't require a sign.
I don't know why talking to you people makes me nervous.
You should be used to it by now.
Well, you know, I got to thinking, several of you were in my sixth grade class, and so I'm thinking I should have been nicer to you then.
You were wonderful.
Yeah, well, we'll see. Um...
She's not going to give you an A now.
She didn't then either.
You're not going to get an A.
You got an A.
I know, baby, you did.
Get a name and address, please, so we can put you on record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna Weston, thirteen twenty-five Lydia, Stevieville. I, I had this all made out, but I thought I was going before him. Um, so, I got to rearrange it a little bit. I did look up the term, uh, let me, let me back up a little bit. I posted the agenda on my Facebook page. I didn't hardly have my hand off the button until I started getting phone calls because, because of this, people questioning this. And so, I began to look and research and try to figure out a way to answer locals' questions. Okay? One of the first things I looked up was what is an industrial site? According to Google, it's usually those that have heavier and potentially disruptive activities. That's from Google. You know now where it's going to be, and it, it looks beautiful. It looks great. We have a lot of concerns. My concerns were, once it's rezoned, just like the mayor said, industrial, it's open to anyone who wants to put in that type of business. What if the deal with the body shop falls through? What if they don't build that there, or if they want to sell the property? Once it's zoned industrial, it's, that stays with the property. It doesn't go with the owner. Um, oh, did I do that, too? Just call me Dr. Frazier. Um, another, uh, another concern was that once, once our football stadium is completed, we're going to have people coming from all over the state because even, even just our football and our track teams, but people will come for playoff games, for, uh, track meets. It, it'll be a nice stadium for people to come to. W- Wolf Nursery Road is a really nice, pretty road that Stevieville can be proud of, and I, we'd really like to, to keep that appearance. These are the, some of the comments that I got from other people. The noise from a body shop will be disruptive to the students studying who live in the Grove Apartments, especially buildings nine, ten, and eleven, because they are directly behind that business property. Having a body shop directly across the street from the, um, new stadium is not going to be an appealing site for visitors to Stevieville. Also suggested that maybe a better use of that property would be a restaurant where folks that come to the ballgames could go over and have a meal. Um, the hardest part about P and Z is reconciling the fact that while a perfectly acceptable business might be making the request, you have to consider anything could possibly go into that location in the future. There, I, I was given an example of a time that the council approved a zoning request for an industrial, uh, from industrial to a single-family housing. Uh, the property buddied up against other residences, so the council thought that was a good fit. But the original owner, who got the zoning change, sold it. And the next owner built a seven-bedroom house on the property for the use of student housing. This, these are still comments that came to me. Am I running out of time? Oh, well.
We interrupted you, so we'll give you a couple more seconds to close out.
Well, okay. So, anyway, I did some research and found out that the Better Business Bureau accreditation, um, revoked, uh, Caliber Collision accreditation because of multiple complaints. There were six hundred and thirteen complaints in the last three years, two hundred and fifty-nine complaints in the last twelve months. They've had several lawsuits against them for fraud in billing, for defective negligent repairs, for which they have paid out millions of dollars. Those are, that's all online. You can, you can see it for yourself. I'm still trying to make sense of why we were going to put a industrial zone between businesses. Okay? And I hope you'll take all that into consideration when you decide what you want to do here.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir. You'll give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. You have, up on the clock there.
I'm Roland Themster. I live at thirty sixty-nine U.S. Highway sixty-seven in Stevieville. I'm the owner of Discount Wheel and Tire, have been for the last twenty years. Um, I don't have anything against Caliber Collision. I don't even know them. But I am concerned about some health issues with my employees. Um, I don't know if any of y'all have ever spent any time around the body shop, but the, the odor coming from there can be pretty strong. Okay? And I don't see any vent stacks on that rendering that show any ventilation going out to keep it away from us. And I don't need a bunch of sick employees trying to do their job to take care of this community like we have for twenty years. Again, I don't have anything against them. I'm just concerned about the health of the community and my employees. That's all I've got. If I can give my time to her, I'd be happy to do that.
We appreciate when the city was looking at buying that property, that you're cooperating, working with us on what we can use back there in the back, access back there. Thanks, sir.
You bet.
I'm just happy to know what your real name is already.
You what?
I never knew your real name.
I knew your real name already.
Me and Jesus know who it is.
It's not RD.
Anybody else want to speak? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and consider, uh, case RZ two oh two four dash zero zero five, which we...
I was going to offer to answer some of those questions.
Get back up three, absolutely, get back up three minutes. Well...
Okay. RD, was that correct? Okay. Uh, Mike Lissy again. To answer your question, RD, everything inside as far as paint booth and so forth actually does have a dedicated paint booth. The only painting that occurs is inside of those paint booths.
You sure you're speaking, Max? So, we can all hear you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The, uh, inside of those paint booth is a filtration system, and the temperatures are designed such that there is not any sort of a problem in terms of off-gassing or anything like that. So, if anybody were to be caught outside doing some sort of painting or something like that, you can guarantee that the management and staff would have words to say about that. And I'm sorry, ma'am, I forgot your name.
Donna Weston.
Donna, thank you. Uh, to answer some of Donna's concerns about the possible land sale and so forth, you know, as was mentioned by Mr. Killen, uh, Caliber does own the property already and does intend to move forward if allowed to do so. Uh, this is not something that has been spoken to with Mr. Killen at this point, but, uh, I don't think it would be an objection to consider, uh, amending this to only qualify for the planned use through Caliber if that were amenable.
Is it even possible? I don't think so.
Okay. I figured I would at least offer it because we have done that before. You know, we do want to make sure that, uh, we're good neighbors. Uh, as far as noise concerns, as I mentioned beforehand, uh, because the work does occur inside of the building, and one thing that you will see on there is the RTUs. Typically, this is an air-conditioned facility, which means whenever there's working on, it's actually enclosed inside, which I should have pointed out earlier. Uh, that helps keep any sort of noise levels and so forth down outside. Uh, concerns about the appeal, uh, if you were to look around at any of the other calibers and so forth that are around, especially in the DFW area, you'll see that they are well-maintained. So, what you see on screen is what would be maintained through the ownership of the property. Uh, the last one in terms of workmanship and lawsuits, uh, since I am the architect, as opposed to actually Caliber, I can only speak based on, uh, scale here. So, one of the things that I do want to point out is that there are well over fifteen hundred calibers across the country. This is a very large corporation, uh, spans all pretty much the forty-eight contiguous. Uh, so, anytime you deal with something that size, you are going to end up with those types of situations. So, worst-case scenario, if you were to look at, I believe you had said there was about six hundred? Was that correct? Six hundred and change in the last three years. You can see that that's well less than one for a property, even if it all occurred in one year. And then, the same thing for some of the other items. Uh, at the end of the day, that's not to make light of the situation, uh, because that is absolutely not my intent. I just wanted to make sure that we understand that this is for any of up to fifteen hundred different properties as opposed to if this were one or two, uh, elsewhere. Uh, last thing to point out before the timer runs out is that Caliber is, uh, corporate headquarters is in Lewisville, not that far down the road from here. So, if there were ever any concerns, you can darn well bet you could take it right up with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll close the public hearing and consider an approval of ordinance rezoning the property located at nine oh two Wolf Nursery Road, being parcel R seven two nine nine four, block one, lot three, of Phase Three DOS Edition of the city of Stevieville, E. Rath County, from Texas Retail and Commercial District B two to Industrial District Indus I.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. And I, and it's probably in here, you've probably already answered it, but to you or to Mr. Killen. So, you have already purchased this property. This isn't like a, you have, Caliber has already purchased the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, can I ask another?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so, if it stays the zone that it is now, you're not able to, to do a body shop at all?
You have any idea what they would do with the property?
If for some reason this were not to go through, they would probably have to sell the property. Caliber solely works as, uh, an automotive collision facility. Uh, so there wouldn't be any sort of automotive repair component or anything like that in a traditional, uh, shop-type setting.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, to, to get us off high center.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the request to rezon the property from B two to industrial.
Second. Have a motion is second. Discussion? Discussion.
Mayor, one of the problems I have is, as was discussed, the industrial zoning stays on the property no matter who the owner is. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with having that zoning in that location because of the proximity to the school, proximity to the apartments, the proximity to the other things that we anticipate going in around that stadium that's being constructed now. It, it worries me that that zoning is so inclusive of so many other things. I understand what the gentleman has presented, and from all the information I've been able to find, they are apparently a very reputable, very good company, but that doesn't mean that that will stay in that location indefinitely. And if they choose to leave, that stays on that property. And that's, that's my, that's what troubles me with that, in that location.
Steve, what caused the P and Z to be unanimous? Was they, they considering any of these things?
Didn't really comment much on, on the case itself. We did have a representative there, but there was not a lot of discussion. I think they were comfortable with the renderings and the fact that we have other paint and body shops around town where the zoning, in one case, we just recently had one on Lingaville Highway. It moved across the street on the opposite side of Lingaville Highway, and it was industrially zoned, but where they were operating was B2, and it was simply as crossing the street. So, I think, I think that was part of the, the logic behind the unanimous vote. It was a long night, that night, and this was one of the cases, you know, after some of the other discussions.
Other questions?
I'll make a comment. You know, ever since I heard Caliber purchased this building, which has been, you know, a couple of months that I heard that, I've, I've made it a point to look at every Caliber Collision shop that I've seen throughout, you know, wherever I'm traveling. And, and you're right, the buildings are great. They're maintained perfectly, they're, they're very clean, and, and like Mr. Nick said, you know, it is, it is a very reputable company. But I will echo his concerns about the, keeping the zoning as industrial, especially with, you know, the ability of, you know, propane or whatever there, and, and next to our children and next to the, you know, the college kids, the, the junior high, the football stadium. I think that is a major concern that we would have to address. And, and honestly, if we were able to amend the zoning, I'd be, I'd be more for it. But, but as it sits right now, I definitely agree with, with Mr. Nick's.
I would also with, with Mr. Nick's. It's not, it's just the R2 going to an R3 is what, what you're talking about. That's, 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 it's not the company, it's just that, moving that forward, that's, that bothers me.
I would encourage you to visit with our new committee chair for that, and maybe when you address that as a, in, as a zoning issue, allow the, allow usage in that area.
I think we definitely do need to visit that.
So, would you and Mr. Cook get, talk about that as an option?
Absolutely.
All right, we have any further discussion? Go to vote, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes, and the motion is to deny the request to rezone to industrial. All right. Next case, RZ 2024-006.
Owner Travis Trust is requesting a rezone of property located at 3084 West Washington. This is parcel 23847 of the Pearson Henry survey of the City of Stevensville, Erez County. He is requesting a rezone from B2 to industrial. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on May 15th, and by unanimous vote, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. Again, this is for a rezone from B2 to industrial. The intended use is for a tow company that will be operated in conjunction with the adjacent business. Again, only the industrial zone district allows for this type of permitted use.
Questions for Steve.
I do apologize, what kind of business?
It's a towing company. It will be for consent toes only, not non-consent toes.
Thank you. Don't go there again.
What is the adjacent business?
I'm sorry, it's Hunter Paint and Body.
Any other questions for Steve? Hearing done, we'll enter a public hearing on case number RZ 2024-006. Does anyone want to come speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at 3084 West Washington, being parcel R 23847 of the Pearson Henry Aos, A0613 survey, house of the, house and commercial building of the City of Stevensville, Erez County, Texas, from retail and commercial B2 to industrial I. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the rezone 2024-006, is that correct? 3084 West Washington, from retail, I'm sorry, from B2 to industrial.
That would be for, that'd be ordinance 2024-014.
Yep, that's it.
There you go.
Second, thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? See to vote, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next case.
RZ 2024-007, Paxton Woolies, representing JPW Consulting Company, requesting a rezone of property at 1020 Paddock, being Block 2, Lot 12 of the Butler Edition of the City of Stevensville, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 One and Two Family Residential District. Commission zoning, and Planning and Zoning Commission convened on May 15th, and again, by unanimous vote, recommended the city council approve the request. This property is currently zoned, single-family, as mentioned. The rezone would allow Mr. Paxton to, actually, the lot allows for the dimensions, has the dimensions, it would allow Mr. Paxton to replat this property and actually get two lots out of this single parcel. The front portion of this parcel would be for a single-family home, still a permitted use under R2 zoning. The back portion would be for a duplex-style home. He can meet the lot dimensions, again, because this lot has 231-foot depth, I believe, 90-foot in width. He will have a 40-foot access for the flag-shaped property and meet the 50-foot requirement for the single-family lot on the front side. He has a sketch that I have included, and I believe that's in your PowerPoint as well, that outlines or designates or delineates how that's going to look on the lot. There was a question relating to fire protection, and I spoke with the fire marshal, and of course, when we get into the, to the development review stage, we will discuss the options that Mr. Paxton would have for that. But with the 150-foot access from Paddock along the side to the back, we believe that they would be able to meet the hose lay requirements, and if not, there are other mechanisms that would allow Mr. Paxton to move forward if this rezone was, was approved. Also, after the rezone, a replat will, will accompany as we get closer to the, the actual project in addition to the CO.
Questions for Steve.
Mr. Killen, did you have any input from any of the area residents that were in the notification zone, or even outside of the notification zone?
No, sir. No, no, no communication from anyone that we sent notice to, as required by law.
Was there any at P and Z?
No, sir.
Okay.
Other questions? Hearing done, we'll enter the public hearing on case number RZ 2024-007. Does anyone want to come speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and consider case RZ 2024-007, which will be ordinance 2024-0-15. Consider approval of rezoning property at 1020 Paddock, parcel R 28770, being Block 2, Lot 12 of the Butler Edition, City of Stevensville, Erez County, Texas, from single-family R1 to two-family residence R2. Do I hear, what's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion.
To approve?
To approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you, Steve. Appreciate you. Next item, Monica.
This is the budget report for the period ending April 30th. Seven months into our fiscal year, our indicators are overall as or better than we anticipated. For our property tax, we received $50,000 in the month of April, which is $270,000 increase over the funds collected last fiscal year date. We're almost at 100%, which is about $78,000 more than we anticipated. We've received $705,000 in sales tax in April, which is $155,000 or 3% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. The amount collected is 61% of our budget, which is about $512,000 higher than anticipated. I don't really expect for us to end the year with $500,000. When I looked at how we're, we had budgeted for it to come in and how it has been coming in, we kind of budgeted a little less and a little more at the end of the year, so I just want to caution you on that. I don't want to have y'all over-expecting more than what we're gonna get.
You know, allowing them to spend your money is what you're saying.
Yes, exactly.
But we're gonna work on the budget soon. You're, you're, you're holding that carrot out in front of us.
Of the 31.3 million revenue received to date, 59% was received in our general fund, 23% was received in our water, wastewater fund, 8% was received in our capital project fund, and 3% was received in our landfill fund. We have received 70% of our total budgeted revenues through April, which is 3.1 million more than anticipated due to taxes, building permits, intergovernmental, our charges for services, and our interest income. We received 1.3 million less revenue than last April, and that's due to debt proceeds that were received in the prior year. Of the 30.5 million spent to date, 44% was expended in our wastewater, wastewater fund, 42% was expended in our general fund, 5% was expended in our capital projects fund, 3% was expended in the debt service, the storm water drainage fund, and then 2% was expended in our landfill fund. We have expended 37% of our total budgeted expenditures through April, which is 16.6 million less than anticipated, and that's due to personnel, contractual, maintenance, grant dispersments, capital outlay, and some of our transfers. We've spent 5.1 million less in expenditures through April than last fiscal year to date, and that's mainly due to our capital outlay, grant dispersments, and then some of our transfers. CETA has received an overall 65% of their budget revenue through April, which is 18,000 more than last fiscal year to date, and 77,000 more than anticipated due to taxes and interest income. CETA has spent an overall 21% of the budgeted expenditures through April, which is 68,000 less than fiscal year to date due to grant dispersments, and 650,000 less than anticipated due to our contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments.
Questions for Monica? Oh, yes, more, everyone. Okay. You look like you've finished. Anything else? Questions? I'm sure David, being the new chair, will have lots of questions next time.
I was trying to, you know, channel my inner Hasky on you just a minute, but didn't work.
Justin, you're out there listening, okay. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Next item, oh, there's no gonna be any report from Economic Development Authority. I just want to make one comment, though. Everybody here needs to call Jeff and ask him about magic, because we're in Las Vegas at that conference.
We're supposed to keep everything in Vegas quiet.
This one is, I told, I'm already, I'm already letting, no, I'm not doing this. And, and the guy on the stage calls up people, you know, to do magic with. He was the first one called up, and he was pretty surprised, it was pretty spectacular. So, ask Jeff what it's like to be a magician. Be sure, everybody, everybody needs to call him, ask him that question. All right. Next item, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, council, last weekend, Mula Fest was very successful, had a lot of attendance. And so, I want to thank all of our staff that, that put in a lot of work to make that happen. If you missed Mula Fest this Friday, Ricky Skaggs will be in the city park this Friday evening, so come on down and listen to some good music. We have committee meetings coming up here in a couple of months, or a couple of weeks, rather, for our new committees. And I think you guys are getting some calendar, calendar invites for a couple of off-site daytime sessions for budget planning. And I think that's everything. Thank you.
Lee.
I would just like to add on to, to what Jason said about Mula Fest. Thank you very much to Darryl, and Michaela, and Ashley, and the rest of staff that did so much to make that a great event. And, secondly, I would like to, I hate to do this, this early in the season, but I'd like to congratulate the Stevensville baseball team for an amazing season. It's over too soon, and I hate that for them, but they put up a very good fight in Lubbock and a, had a wonderful season, and congratulations. And that's all I have.
Monica.
I will also mention, taking the grandkids down to the, to all the rides down there at Mula Fest, so it was a, it was a great time down there. They, they had a great time. You know, it was very well-run, very clean.
No comments? That's okay, you'll get, you'll get it run out there.
So, I guess this past month, in May, the park held, held up Moms in Mayhem, a mother-son's event down in the park that Derek put on, and it was very successful, lots of compliments and praises for him and his crew for putting that on. I wish my son would have been too cool to go, because it looked like a lot of fun. And then I also want to point out that Splashville does open on Thursday. That's all I got.
David.
It always stinks being this far on the end, because everyone already, already talks about everything.
You just switch places a little, a little, maybe. Start at that end.
So, I want to echo the Mula Fest, that was, that was a fantastic event. Darren, thank you so much. We went down to the park that Friday, and it was underwater. I mean, it was, it was crazy. So, to, to pull that out and help, your staff helping on that as well, Darren, so thank you so much. The, the Moms in Mayhem thing, I've heard nothing but great things as well. Congratulations to our new officer and Stevensville PD for, for getting a, a good recruit, and that's all I have.
I'd like to just jump on the bandwagon here, thank the Parks crew for putting on a great event with Mula Fest. We had a lot of fun with our kids down there. They did a great job.
I'll, I'll tag on just a little bit more and say, every year we do this, we, we refine it a little bit more. We've learned from the process every year, make it a little smoother, make it flow a little better, and make it a better event for the community. I, I want to thank staff, as I've said in the past, we have an outstanding staff, not just Parks and Rec, but all across the city. We're blessed to have them. Hopefully, we'll be able to take care of them and keep them working for us.
Can I add, the streets department did a great job with the rain as well.
Who did?
The streets department did a great job with the rain as well.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely. If you have something, you can jump in.
Sorry. I just want to compliment, I mean, I've been down to watch the, the little T-ball, T-ballers play. Those fields are unbelievable. There's no stickers on them at all. I mean, they're, they're just, the fields are in the best shape I've ever seen them in, ever. And I've, I've heard so many people comment about it, down there, what they look like. So, compliments to the Parks staff, where what they're doing down there is making it really, really attractive fields for our, our children to play in.
It is, with no other agenda item, it is 7:13, and we will stand adjourned. Sarah.